The West Village, Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, Times Square, love it or hate it, it's certainly what you identify New York with. So there's a lot of the sort of touchstones of what makes New York, New York.
The demographic is changing. It is trending away from a lot of the traditional minorities that had lived over here in the Hell's Kitchen area. Chelsea happens to have the largest concentration of galleries in New York City. Still some small mom and pops, people trying to make it on their own. And then you happen to have the huge conglomerates. You have Google. To our east, there is a ton of theater. It's New York. So we've got pretty much everything here, and this district is representative of that.
A lot of parts of the city that people really, really want to live in, that until not that long ago were somewhat affordable, but have become dramatically less so in recent years. How do we keep these neighborhoods that are so close to the center of everything feeling like neighborhoods and not just an extension of Midtown or Times Square?
The difficult part about the neighborhood and serving the neighborhood is that it's very diverse and that there are these hidden pockets of poverty throughout the neighborhood, and they're invisible populations. People don't necessarily see that there are seniors living in walk-up tenement buildings or families that are still struggling in the neighborhood.
One of the main issues that we have is affordable housing. We try to work very much with the developers coming in to ensure that there is a wide range of income bands that are supported in affordable housing, so that it's not just the lowest of the low that have an opportunity, but you have those middle-income folks that workforce income band, firefighters, police, teachers, so that they can also be a part of the neighborhood.
There's really just not a lot of affordable areas. It's either the smaller rent-stabilized apartments or the much more expensive apartment buildings that are going on. I think the families are still struggling to either stay in the apartments in which they're in, or we're seeing a lot of families struggle to even maintain their own family within this neighborhood, because just their everyday necessities can't be met on their current income. Traffic is really, really out of control in the neighborhood. The bicycle lanes are good for what they are, but it does cause a lot of congestion, so it's narrowed Ninth, so we have a lot more traffic.
Some of the city's largest and oldest landmark districts are in Council District 3. The city has maybe been a little too lax in doing that, and that the protections that used to come along with being landmark and being in a historic district are not really as strong as they used to be. So whether it's in the Meatpacking District or the West Village or Chelsea, in recent years, that there's been a big hue and cry over decisions the city's Landmarks Preservation Commission has made, and the city council member is definitely front and center in those debates. So the Hudson Yards is going to be the largest development ever on Earth, and that's going to bring thousands and thousands and thousands more people in and out of that neighborhood. They extended the seven, but that's really just one line that's supposed to accommodate many, many, many thousands of people.
I'd want open communication. I'd want someone to come here from the very beginning of their term and to sit down and have an open dialogue about what the problems are. Not everyone plays together in the neighborhood. There are the larger real estate developers, some in which we have really great relationships with, but there are some that are new to the neighborhood that are taking stock in building in our neighborhood, but they're not really playing fairly, so to speak.
One of the trends has been is to try to implement a lot of legislation that works across the entire city. That doesn't apply to these areas of Manhattan, so I think it's important that the councilperson is very much entrenched in the local issue.
A representative for City Council District 3 has to be somebody who's really smart and knows the system, because you're representing what a lot of people consider some of the most valuable real estate in the world, but the people who live there just call it their neighborhood. Traditionally, the representative of the third council district is probably the leading voice on the city council around lesbian and gay issues. Certainly, they're expected to be champions around immigrant rights and workers' rights. There's an expectation that the third council member is going to be a real progressive advocate, a real progressive voice.
My name is Marnie Halasa, and I am running for City Council District 3 on the Ecojustice Party line. And I believe that ordinary citizens need to get involved with the political process. So whether you are an artist, a teacher, a small business owner, regular folks need to get involved to shape the world we live in. Everyone talks about affordable housing. My platform has the specifics to accomplish that. No one wants to see our culturally rich neighborhood streets turn into suburban strip malls that displace residents and local businesses. We need affordable housing solutions that work, such as 100% publicly financed and community-controlled housing. I also want to help small business owners have more control over their leases, as well as afford rents to encourage full occupancy. In addition, I will work to preserve and expand rent stabilization and rent-controlled units. I will also work to repeal the MIH/BQA rezoning, as well as the 421A tax giveaway to developers that has enabled the city's hyper-gentrification. But I'd also like to do something about poverty, which manifests itself as homelessness, joblessness, and income inequality. A plan that is already in place in many cities across the country is the universal basic income. It offers $2,500 a month for all residents, as well as a government-based jobs guarantee. Imagine how life-changing that would be to so many New Yorkers in our district. We also need progressive taxation, including the stock transfer tax, which will generate billions for city and state programs. Both of these programs would give low-income and middle-class New Yorkers a support and social mobility to become healthier, more independent, and live life in a decent, dignified way. I'm not your typical candidate. I don't have political experience, but I don't need that to run, and neither do you. No matter who you are, if you are passionate about your community and want to improve the lives of others, then, like me, jump into this game. If you'd like to learn more about me, go to Marnie for City Council Facebook page, and remember, vote for Marnie Halasa in November.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, Gotham Gazette, and the New York Amsterdam News, is pleased to bring you an interview with Marnie Halasa, the Ecojustice candidate running to be elected in City Council District 3. I'm Eleanor Tatum, publisher and editor-in-chief of the New York Amsterdam News. New York City's general election is Tuesday, November 7. Welcome, Marnie.
Thank you.
So what has made you decide to jump into this race?
Okay, well, it's no secret that I'm this theatrical protester. So I've gotten major national, international media attention, dressing up in these costumes with these sort of artistic installation pieces. I founded an organization called Revolution is Sexy, and really, that was to spread sort of progressive messages in the media. But I feel like running for city council is really the ultimate protest. And who knew that I would actually be protesting what is happening in my own backyard? So my platform is really about the hyper-gentrification going on in my district and supporting a piece of legislation called the Small Business Job Survival Act that I feel like is not getting much attention. So 28 city council members have signed on to it, but, you know, I feel like people are paying lip service. So they say they sponsor it, and everybody laments that all the businesses are closing, but nobody seems to be really pushing it.
But you would represent a very wide district.
I do, I do.
And it's kind of very eclectic, as well, and very different needs in all the different parts.
Right, right.
So you've got everything from nightlife to the garment district. Now, there's currently a plan that the mayor was talking about moving a lot of the garment industry over to...
Right, right. Which, when I talk to people, they're furious about it. So it's interesting. I've gotten some word from some elected officials that I talk to. They say that this should happen, and actually, people in that district want it to happen. They want it to move to Brooklyn. But the people that I talk to, they want the garment district to stay there. So that's, I think, a very important point, because sometimes you get two different, you know, opposing views, and, you know, which is the real narrative? But the people that I talk to in the garment district, some of my friends that are costume designers that design for Broadway, they do not want the garment district to leave. That's very, very important to say.
Well, I mean, yeah, it would be very difficult to get Bethnal's Gloves fixed.
Of course, yeah.
Between the matinee and the...
Right, 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 right. And all the other things that go on as well, that, you know, that ordinary people, you know, partake of, you know, so I think that's important.
And what about housing in the district?
Right where I live, 34th between Ninth and 10th, there's Hudson Yards. So these huge, like, you know, monstrous buildings are going up, like, really gentrifying the area. And those developers get the 421A tax subsidy. What I'd like to do is take away that tax subsidy, and the city can actually have $1 billion and put that towards affordable housing. And I think the narrative is that, oh, you need to give an incentive to developers to build in Manhattan, or else they're not going to build. I believe that that's a myth. Developers are going to build in Manhattan. It's attractive. Any developer is going to see this as an opportunity. So that's one thing that I'd like to get rid of. Also, I'd like to reinvigorate Mitchell Llama, Mitchell Llama where there's permanent affordable housing. So that was a program in the '50s that happened, and that's something that I think that low and middle-income people could really benefit from, to actually own their apartments. I mean, that's a way for, you know, social mobility to happen, a way for these kinds of, these families to actually get some stability. So I would do that as well.
Well, what we're seeing right now is the Mitchell Llama developments actually trying to get out of the Mitchell Llama program and sell off.
Right, right, right. So we should, we should do, you know, implement mechanisms to stop that. So, I mean, for me, coming from a protest background, you know, and now I'm being advised by some academics, I mean, for me, my first instinct is to, oh, if we don't like something, we need to protest, we need to scream about it, we need to get the public engaged, put these kinds of messages into the mainstream media, so people can actually, you know, understand what's going on. You know, but it's more complicated, obviously. You need to get, you know, partnerships, public-private partnerships, nonprofits, you need to get people more engaged, you need to get everybody engaged. So that's something that I'm learning.
Now, in your district, I think there's also a big issue with the Airbnb.
You know, if somebody is staying in their apartment and they want to rent a room in their apartment as long as they're, you know, they reside there with, you know, as a permanent resident, I think that's fine. A lot of New Yorkers I know, you know, everybody's sort of struggling, so whatever they can do to make a little money, to actually make ends meet, I wouldn't begrudge anybody that.
But do you agree that people that are just getting apartments to Airbnb them out on a consistent basis, should that be legal?
No, I mean, you probably shouldn't do that. Yeah, but I think if you live in the apartment, I think that should be fine.
And maybe if you're going on vacation or something, being able to do it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. So, but as long as you are the permanent resident and you're basically there.
All right, now, schools. It's a big issue in this city.
Schools, yes, it is, yes, it is.
And as more and more residential buildings are going up...
Right.
...in the district, how do you plan to alleviate the overcrowding in schools? And I mean, and in your district, you actually do have some of the most coveted...
You know, for me personally, I would like to support public schools as opposed to charter schools. You know, I think it's important to, that everybody has access to a really good education. And with overcrowding, if you implement programs like getting rid of the 421A subsidy and being able to put that money towards whether it's affordable housing, building new schools, so there's not overcrowding, I mean, that's something we can do, so.
Now, you keep on talking about 421, but would you also, how would you deal with the rezoning issues? Or do you think that taking away the tax subsidies would take care of the rezoning issues in and of themselves?
In terms of rezoning, you know, the 20-80 split of the rezoning, where it's 20% affordable housing and 80% market rate, a lot of people that I talk to, you know, basically say that they want to, you know, make the 20-80 more 50-50. So that's something that people tell me.
If developers were doing something like a 50-50 split, do you think at that point they should have some sort of subsidies when they were doing things like that? And do you think there should be upzoning allowed if they were going to actually bring that many apartments into market that were low and middle-income affordable?
Um, you know, again, I feel like a developer that develops in Manhattan, I mean, I feel like should not get a tax subsidy. I feel like we have to balance the needs of the community with, you know, with property owners, with the developers. So I just feel it's, I think you need to put the community's interest first.
So we just take the money that you would get from them and not give them the tax breaks to putting that towards building...
Affordable housing.
Building affordable housing.
Yes, yes.
And then, do you believe in community policing?
I do believe in community policing. I think it's important that the police and the community work together, you know, so people from the community can work with the police, and the police can actually be on the beat. I believe that there should be community policing, definitely.
All right. And, you know, I mean, so they've started a new program, like the NCO program in some areas of the city, where there are actual officers that are given to certain blocks of communities.
Right, right. You get to know the people, and, yes.
Right. Kind of like what we used to see, you know, years ago, where you had the beat cop that knew every kid on the corner.
Right, right. No, I definitely, I think that's a really good program.
Okay, great. Now, you are on the Ecojustice line.
Right.
Pedestrian safety, excessive noise, air pollution are utmost concern of the members of the district. And how will you work to ensure that sufficient resources from the city are allocated to address these issues and needs?
I mean, one thing I see in my district is that there's a tremendous amount of construction. So it's almost like the construction is taking over the pedestrian walkways, taking over the streets, taking the traffic, is the congestion of the traffic. One thing that I would do, you know, maybe we do need congestion pricing, something that the mayor's been talking about, and also, you know, maybe regulating those areas where there's a tremendous amount of construction, you know, so pedestrians can walk freely and there's a flow, the flow of traffic is able to move quickly and unencumbered. So that's something that I would do.
Wouldn't it be nice if there was a scheduled street closure, so you don't have, like, three streets in a row that all have cranes on the same day?
Exactly. That's right, that's right, right, right. Because it really goes on at the Hudson Yards. There's a tremendous amount of that kind of thing, so.
Yeah. All right, now, you know, we were talking about affordable housing, but one of the issues is, and especially in your neighborhood, and especially in the Chelsea area and in Hell's Kitchen, you know, there are a lot of those, the older buildings, the old law tenements, and there's a lot of harassment of tenants.
There is, there is.
And what kind of measures would you try to put in place to help protect tenants from tenant harassment?
I mean, one thing that I'd like to do is I'd like to make sure that tenants have access to legal representation. And legal representation that goes beyond kind of a simplistic sort of paradigm where there, that somebody is... I have a friend, actually, who has a complicated rights and succession issue, and he's gone to sort of the available attorneys that the district offers, and they tell him that, you know, your case is too complicated, we really can't, we really can't do it because we don't have the resources. But maybe giving more resources for, to tenants where they can get legal representation, and, you know, maybe a community liaison where people can go, where they have more access, you know, to, to talk to, you know, to talk to somebody about their problems, so.
Well, so...
Like, develop more, basically, develop more resources.
So in your office, you know, one of your main functions will be constituent services?
Right, right.
So I guess that will be a part of your, your office?
Right, no, totally. I mean, constituents need representation, definitely.
All right, and then...
I mean, that happens to me, actually, now. People come to me with issues and with, I mean, with housing issues, but people approach me, I mean, I'm a candidate, but even when I was a protester, people would see my name in the paper and call me up about housing issues. So it's kind of interesting. But people need help, so.
Yeah, and there are a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
And then, and what does your role be, if you were elected to represent the district, in discouraging discrimination against marginalized communities such as immigrants, Muslims, LGBTQ individuals, and people of color?
What's interesting now is there is, I guess, the schools don't now give any statistics on discrimination. I mean, one thing that I'd like to do is to really institute a program that pressures all the schools to give really good statistics on who's being bullied, who's being discriminated against, and, you know, taking that data and like, creating a program where, you know, we can fight discrimination, so.
Well, Marnie, it's been a pleasure to be with you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
The general election is on Tuesday, November 7. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and all the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, lwvnyc.org, gothamgazette.com, amsterdamnews.com, or mnn.org. Thank you for watching Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Have a great day.
I think a lot of people would assume District 6 is a very rich district, because it has Central Park, it has Lincoln Center, it has that sort of area of very high-priced real estate. But I think people oftentimes forget that there are several housing projects that line Amsterdam Avenue that also encompass the district.
New York City is, New York City and this neighborhood is a lot more divided than people think. And despite it being the Upper West Side and a bastion of sort of liberalism and a place where equality really matters, there's a lot of inequality right here, block by block, in this neighborhood.
We're blessed that we have two world-class parks, Riverside and Central Park here. The city budget is difficult, Parks is never going to be a priority, which is too bad. You know, you would want your city councilperson to fight for that as much as possible. It's becoming increasingly white, young, family-affluent. There are fewer senior citizens, fewer people of color, fewer single people, you know, artists, that sort of people that used to populate the neighborhood more than they do now.
They have good schools in the area as well. You also have a lot of working-class people in this area that live in affordable housing.
Transportation is certainly something people, we're very blessed to have a great mass transit system on the West Side, but, you know, the three lines are overcrowded and they're not always running. The loss of mom-and-pop stores and retail establishments, it is incredible to see sort of the empty storefronts along Columbus Avenue and Amsterdam Avenue. But I think there are a lot of neighbors who want to see making sure their streets are safe and their streets are clean and actually getting things done.
Real estate rent across the board in New York City is becoming really difficult for people who aren't locked into long-term leases or they don't own their own building. Talking to some people in the district, they're definitely concerned about the influx of foreign cash that's driving up their ability to rent apartments or purchase apartments. I think for people in the housing projects, their issues are sort of the standard issues that you hear in every other district. Sort of quality of housing, quality of schools, there tends to be a little more crime in those sort of pocketed sections. So many of those housing projects are sitting on prime real estate. For many of these families who unfortunately are in generational poverty, but they're making a living in New York only because they're in public housing, even though, when you sort of scratch the surface, public housing is not that cheap.
When I talk to residents that's been in this building like 30, 40 years, they tell me the same old problem, nothing changes, a lot of issues in this building, they afraid to use the elevators because they're afraid of getting stuck. Not even the elderly, even the kids that coming from school.
Preserving a stock of housing for the non-wealthy, to keep this neighborhood as diverse as possible and as artistic as possible, is central to its character, to its, to its well-being. We're losing people because of higher rents. So that, to me, is a central issue. Locally owned businesses are receding year by year. Changes the character, and it's a loss.
To really make sure that they're representing the entire district, not just the voters, not just the wealthy people, not just the corporate interests, which are, you know, the whole Lincoln Center complex of the Met and the theater complexes and the Jazz and Juilliard and everything else, little things like that, I think, make a huge difference.
I would want my city councilperson to listen, to have a good rapport with the residents. Let people know that you're here, not only around election time, that you're there all the time.
Keeping up the legal protections to keep people here and keeping a stock of low and middle-income housing is difficult, but that's what I would want my city councilperson to, to work for.
The Upper West Side is very known for political clubs and deep histories and things. I would want my elected official to be willing to look at everyone and, and make judgments that are not just based on political expediency, but also based on sort of what their gut is telling them and what they feel is the right thing to do for the neighborhood.
Hello. My name is Hy, that's spelled H-Y, Hy Druzen. I'm running as a Republican candidate for City Council District 6 on the Upper West Side. My name on the ballot is Hyman Druzen. I was raised in the Bronx and moved to the West Side in 1969. I'm a retired computer programmer, married with a daughter, son-in-law, and two-year-old grandson, living in Brooklyn. I'll briefly mention three of my issues. Number one, education. I want to expand the number of charter schools. Charters help students, especially minorities. However, Mayor de Blasio opposes them because charters are not unionized, and he owes his election to the UFT, the United Federation of Teachers. I also would allow vouchers and tax credits for private schools, and would repeal the anti-Catholic Blaine Amendment to allow them for religious schools, too. De Blasio wants to end the entrance tests, which have been used for decades, to select students to the top five city high schools, Stuyvesant, Bronx Science, et cetera. I say, don't fix what ain't broke. Number two, housing and homelessness. I propose fixing the thousands of New York City Housing Authority apartments that are vacant due to vandalism and disrepair, then privatizing them, because owners maintain property, their property, better than renters. And number three, rampant mom-and-pop store closings. We should repeal the commercial rent tax and cut red tape regulations. Also, we should issue tickets sparingly after warnings, not promiscuously as a source of revenue. So, for common sense, please vote Republican on Election Day. Thank you.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, Gotham Gazette, and the New York Amsterdam News, is pleased to bring you an interview with Hyman Druzen, Republican Party candidate running to be elected in City Council District 6. I'm Eleanor Tatum, publisher and editor-in-chief of the New York Amsterdam News. New York City's general election is Tuesday, November 7. Welcome, Hy. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Thank you.
So, the Upper West Side elementary schools have been criticized for being economically and racially segregated. How would you address this issue if elected to the council?
What I would do... What I would do is something which you'll never hear Mayor de Blasio propose, which is create more charter schools. Because the real problem here is not integration, segregation, whatever, it's how well students do, especially minorities, which is really what we're talking about here. And it's been shown in study after study that charter schools are better for all students, especially though for minorities. And yet, they're adamantly opposed by a mayor who is very pro, you know, racial harmony. Why? Because he is being funded by the United Federation of Teachers, the U F T.
Okay, but I'm not sure how creating charter schools is going to help make these schools more economically and racially more balanced.
They will create schools which will result in successful student outcomes for the students who attend, the minorities who attend. And I think that's more important than anything else.
Well, I think there's a combination, because some of the schools on the Upper West Side are very successful, some are not. But there is not a balance. And we all know that in this country, that where we have students that know each other and when we have communities that are integrated, where people know about people that are different from each other, we have people that are more successful in general. So, children need to know about children that are different from each other.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I don't think that's true. I think what makes students excel, including or especially minorities, is the quality of the teaching and the atmosphere in the school, not the color of their...
So, you think it's fine to have schools that are 100% black and Hispanic and 100% white?
If you had a charter school that was 100% black, where all the students succeeded very well, there would be nothing wrong with that.
The American Museum of Natural History Gilder Center expansion has called for the construction of a new museum building that would occupy a quarter acre of what is now the Theodore Roosevelt Park. What's your position on this expansion?
My position is I favor the expansion, even though I recognize the fact that the people who live right near there and who are used to walking their dogs or whatever in that quarter of an acre are beyond adamant about opposing it. I mean, not only is there, there are a whole series of reasons why that expansion is very helpful to the museum and to the community. But just stepping back for a minute and looking at the entire issue, how important is it, a quarter of an acre of a park, when you have about a, you know, almost a square mile of park a block away called Central Park? Whatever it is you do in that park, even in that quarter of an acre, whether it's take your kids, walk your dog, I mean, for the benefit of the museum, can't you walk a block over to Central Park and do the same thing there? I recognize I've immediately lost the votes of all the people whose sole issue revolves around this point. But that's my, with the little research I've done, and I've visited and I've spoken to a few people about it, that's my position.
Now, what would you do to...
By the way, that happens to agree with the current incumbent Democrat City Council member, Helen Rosenthal, who supports it and can more eloquently explain why. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What would you do to work to ensure the preservation of landmarks in your district?
I wouldn't do anything. The Landmark Commission is doing a fine job. There's nothing they have to do beyond that. The fact of the matter is that landmarking is, I think, at a fine point now, maybe even beyond a fine point. Right next to my building, there's a synagogue, which wanted to either, it had to either close up, it was broke, or it had to sell its land to redevelop and then put the synagogue in the bottom. And there was a huge fight by the people on my block, and their main argument was it's a landmark, which the Landmark Commission turned down. And in all fairness, should have, because it's not a landmark. There's nothing special about that synagogue. I've lived next to it for 40 years.
Now, the city's Department of Buildings had put the brakes on plans for a 668-foot-tall luxury condo building in your district, 200 Amsterdam Avenue. But just last month, it got the green light to go ahead from the Department of Buildings. What is your position on these superstructures?
Well, these superstructures is a generalization. I mean, you have to look at each case individually. I mean, when they were, when Donald Trump, if I can use a word that will make me lose the election by just saying that name, was going to redevelop the land along the Pennsylvania Railroad tracks, and he proposed this huge tall building, which would have been the tallest in the city or in the world, with a radio tower, a TV antenna. It was pointed out that it would cast a shadow that would go from, you know, the 50s and the 60s all the way to 72nd Street. And that was turned down. And the developments that were put up, which are reasonably tall, there are none of them super-duper tall, which is, you know, I don't have any problem with that, the solution that came to pass there. Every neighborhood, every tall building is always opposed. However, the entire West Side, if you go back to the 20s, consisted of tiny little buildings. In the 1920s, when there was the boom, before the Depression, that's when they built Broadway, West End Avenue, all the buildings the people who now live in are 16 stories tall. Well, they had to tear down other buildings. If those hadn't been torn down, you wouldn't be living where you live now. I mean, you have to have a certain amount of progress. It sounds rather excessive. I'm not an expert on that particular site. I can't give you a definitive yes or no on that. It may or may not be too tall, is all I can say.
Okay, now, do you support the mayor's proposal of a 2.5% mansion tax for property sales of homes priced over $2 million?
I suppose we have to do that because the city needs money. And the reason the city needs money, generally speaking, taxes are a very bad idea for a lot of reasons, and not just because it hurts a person, you know, in his pocketbook. It also hurts the economy. When you cut taxes, it sounds counterintuitive, but you actually increase collections. Because when you cut taxes, everything else being equal, the economy grows faster, you know, market capitalism works better, and therefore, you wind up actually collecting more taxes. That's a general principle, Laffer's curve. However, this mayor has incredibly increased spending, unbelievably. And he has basically a rubber-stamp city council, which is the main reason I'm running. He needs some opposition. I remember the 70s, we were close to bankruptcy. We just need one big downturn in the stock market and maybe also in the real estate market, and we may be close to bankruptcy too. There's a terrific amount of money that we owe, all this borrowing that's done. So, yeah, you can always find, yeah, let's tax this particular category, it only affects certain people and they're rich, so who cares? But, you know, taxes are, should ideally be cut, not raised.
All right, now, at the same time, you're wanting to ideally lower taxes, we have a huge need in your district and around the city for affordable housing. And what is the number-one thing you would do as a city council member to expand the number of affordable housing units in your district?
Okay, I went to a mayoral, the mayoral debate that was held a few days ago at Symphony Space, and I heard both de Blasio and Nicole Malliotakis' suggestions, both of which had good ideas. I will add an idea that wasn't mentioned, which may help, more or less. There's a program called New York City Housing Authority, which has, you know, hundreds of buildings all over the city. There are thousands, if not tens of thousands, of units in those buildings that are empty because they're in disrepair, often due to vandalism. I would, number one, crash program to fix those and rent those. And number two, and this is a really new proposal, privatize them. In other words, allow the tenants living them, if they can afford it, to buy them. Because rule of life, an owner will take better care of his apartment than a renter. And it certainly will improve things in general to have owners rather than renters. If you're in a NYCHA, it's called Housing Complex, well, blocks of the city, why do I care? I mean, this is sort of a generalization, but it applies in certain cases.
All right, so if the people in NYCHA, for the most part, are low-income earners, how much would you propose that these apartments cost?
I don't know. I haven't thought it out that much, but maybe a special, you know, low rate can be offered to them, maybe with very good terms. Owning a house, owning an apartment, whatever, is a definite plus. I don't think anyone would argue with that, even though the city is mostly renters.
And the city would have continued to manage the buildings?
Good question. Well, once again, I haven't thought out all of the, yeah, there's a good question. What if some people buy and the others are still on regular NYCHA? Who runs the building? I mean, it's, I haven't thought that out. I'm sure there can be a way that we can figure out an answer to that question. Probably it continues to manage the building until majority or even supermajority of the apartments are bought, in which case it would be run by the tenants, I would imagine, just thinking on my feet here or while I'm sitting.
Well, listen, thank you so much for coming in today.
You're welcome. These are hard questions.
It's a pleasure to talk to you.
Thank you.
The general election is on Tuesday, November 7th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you should visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org, gothamgazette dot com, amsterdamnews dot com, or m n n dot org. Thank you for watching Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Have a great day.
District 7 is a quite diverse district in the sense that it extends from 96th Street all the way up to the 160s. Obviously, that captures a large portion of Columbia University's main campus. You have lifelong New Yorkers, you have a historically black neighborhood, you have a historically Latino, Puerto Rican, Dominican neighborhoods also in the district.
It covers a very large area and sometimes very different. To the south is 96th Street in the west, and then you can go all the way up to Harlem, and it does cover parts of Harlem and Washington Heights.
These are the kinds of neighborhoods where, in some ways, you have a real confrontation between those who don't have a lot and those who have serious resources and political power. In some respects, this district represents everything that is New York in that regard.
It is safe. It is right by the water. It's on a great train line. The architecture is, I think, some of the most beautiful in the entire city. I mean, there's something very romantic about New York City, but definitely about District 7.
The concerns of District 7 are affordable housing, transportation, the availability, and need for people to move around freely and easily throughout the district, and we need better bus services for our residents. And then we have a large elderly population. A lot of attention has to be paid to what services we offer to our elderly. Now, we have the availability of free attorneys in housing court. It's a new thing and it's a game changer. It now helps folks who are at risk of eviction have a fighting chance of staying in their homes. When I say affordable, it's keeping folks in their apartment. Are we making more apartments available to folks in need?
You do have gentrification issues. Providing affordable units to be matched by market rate is one of the difficulties. While you may provide a number of, quote, "affordable" units, you may ultimately lead to displacement in the not-too-distant future, because suddenly, there's a wealth of market-rate units, which tends to jack up the rates for apartments in the rental market and displace working-for people. You also have how you're allocating educational opportunity in the various schools.
Some of the mom-and-pop shops that were here are no longer here, and they're being replaced by national chains. And these are people who rode out some really bad storms in the 80s and even the 90s, and now they're being pushed out of the neighborhood that they essentially stuck by. To buy in District 7 right now for a lot of families is absolutely impossible. And even to rent in this district is becoming even more impossible, largely because of the expansion of Columbia University, and also there are a lot of people from out of New York City and from other boroughs in New York City who see this as a desirable neighborhood.
What can be done to keep folks in their apartment? Second question, what can we do to increase the stock to get folks into those apartments? Whoever the city councilperson will be, would have to be able to balance folks living in public housing as well as folks living in market-rate, high-end luxury buildings and still represent both sectors well.
There needs to be some sort of assistance from the city council to help some of these businesses, either with financial literacy, some sort of tax relief, something from the council to make sure that we don't lose what makes New York City, New York City. So, I would love for the city council to really make sure also that the community in District 7 feels as though they're welcome to Columbia. Columbia is an open campus. It's a beautiful campus. You're allowed to walk through the campus, you can sit on the steps, you can lay on the grass. And we see that some community members do that, but there's still a lot of invisible boundaries, where a lot of people think that they're not allowed to be on this space.
I think it's really having a granular understanding of the people in the district, essentially appeal to a wide array of different constituencies, sometimes with very different needs. And making sure this doesn't come to break down, where one group feels that it's being totally excluded from the political process, is one of the balancing acts that has to go on for this particular individual who runs her office and ultimately leads the district.
Many of the problems in government today, budget, public works, and education, poverty and homelessness, the environment, et cetera, are greatly exacerbated by the desire of the two major political parties and their supporters to control legislative outcomes. Instead of a do-or-die approach to policymaking, we need to make our first priority safeguarding the democratic process. If the democratic process is strong and supported with fairness, we will achieve the policy outcomes the majority of voters prefer. The influence of money and other means of controlling the political process is what alienates citizens from voting and becoming actively engaged, and an actively engaged citizenry is the key to healing our democracy. Attempts to suppress groups of voters or to misinform them through manipulation of the mass media really damage the political process itself. This must not be allowed to continue. The number-one goal of our politics must be to protect the integrity of our political system, especially from the malicious influences of money, commercial mass media, and sabotage by partisan political factions and technological tampering. It's our solemn duty to hand over our system to the next generation in at least as good condition as we found it. I subscribe to the Green Party platform's call advocating for the creation of nonpartisan local assemblies to further citizen engagement and to mitigate the role of money in the political process. I support allowing for initiative and referendum processes that allow the citizens to vote on proposed laws. I favor full public financing of campaigns and limits on campaign spending. I also strongly believe that the current system of private purchasing of media in public elections is fundamentally unfair and must be changed to give all qualified candidates equal access to broadcast media. Instant runoff or ranked choice voting will help eliminate the two-party stranglehold on our government and political process. So, vote green in November. We're the party to end partisan gridlock in government.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, the Amsterdam News, and Gotham Gazette, The Amsterdam News, and Gotham Gazette, is pleased to bring you an interview with Florindo Tronsaliti, the Green Party candidate running for city council, District 7, in November's city general election. I'm Ben Max, executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Mr. Tronsaliti, thank you for being here. Appreciate seeing you. So tell viewers and voters in District 7 especially a little bit about who you are and why you're running for city council.
Oh, well, thank you, Ben. It's great to be here. I feel privileged. I regret the absence of my worthy opponent, Mark Levine, but thanks for letting me hold forth. And what I have to say to the voters in my district is that it's a great district. I've lived there for over 20 years now, and I also, you know, lived there before when I was going to college. So the time I've spent in the district has really made me feel like it's home, and the changes that have gone on there, I think, have predominantly been for the better. There are still some residual issues that I want to bring up, but by and large, I think it's one of the best neighborhoods to live in the country. And the reason I want to run for city council is because I feel that I have a vision of where the country and the city and the district need to go. And I'm not somebody, as a Democrat or Republican would be, who's really aligned with any political establishment. I have, as a member of the Green Party, a lot of leeway in terms of formulating my policy and issues, opinions. So what I would say is that I have the ability to think outside the box when it comes to solving problems the city has and the district, and thinking about where we're going to be going in the future, which is really what I want to focus on, is we know where we are, and we're in a pretty good place. We've really inherited a tremendous amount of good stuff from the people in the past, whether it's the infrastructure, the structure of the civil government, and, you know, the community institutions. But we have to make sure we're going to pass on what we have to the next generation in at least as good condition as we've gotten it.
So what are some of those things that you're hoping to bring to the city council if you were to be elected in November? What are some of those things that are animating your campaign? I mean, you are seeking to unseat an incumbent, Mr. Levine, who, you know, was invited here today. What are your ideas? What motivates your run?
Well, first and foremost, I think our, you know, we need to change our focus a little bit, as I said, on what's coming up in the future. I mean, we're in a time where things are getting more precarious. Fortunately for us, not as far as a gun control or that type of problem that's affecting other parts of the country, but things like climate change, housing, homelessness, food, these are all issues that are going to be very important and, in some cases, urgent in the future. So I think we need to start planning for those kinds of things. The infrastructure business is something I want to bring up because everybody knows the subways here are spectacular. It's the largest subway system in the country. And for all the problems we have and the complaints we get, we have to admit that it's an enormous task to keep a system like that up and running. So all of us should take some credit for that, but we need to look ahead and figure out where we want to go with the system as it is. Do we need to expand it? Do we need to go to other forms of public transportation? Are we going to phase out automobiles? I think these are all questions that need to be raised seriously. And where I'm going to differ from Mr. Levine is that I, as a member of the Green Party, want to focus on the importance of local assemblies, which are more or less ad hoc, nonpartisan, Occupy-type assemblies that would take place within our district and that would further engage the voting population in the political process. I think one of our big problems is that people are not sufficiently engaged in the process. A lot of people don't know who their city council member is, what district they're in, what the issues are that are being voted on, and they're completely cut off from the legislative process. That has to change.
So let me ask you this. We'll come back to some more of your ideas, but tell viewers and voters a little bit about what qualifies you, what's your background, what skills do you bring to bear, why should folks entrust you as a legislator, as a district representative, as someone who would have to do those constituent services you just mentioned? What brings you here? What's some of the highlights of your path to this candidacy?
Well, I'm somebody who's very concerned with the community and, you know, civic well-being. I have often done a lot of volunteer work over the years, whether it's working in shelters or churches, you know, food pantries and that kind of thing. But primarily, the last five years or so, I've really devoted to a grassroots nonprofit organization called Peace Action Manhattan. And our mission is to change the relationship between the local population and the federal government, particularly in terms of the Pentagon. So, for example, my congressional district is District 15. District 15 sent $193.29, that's $193.3 million, to the Pentagon in 2015. Now, what could that district do with $193 million?
You mean through tax revenues?
Yeah, through tax revenues. And what that, I don't know what your opinion is about the Iraq and Afghanistan wars or setting up these bases in the Philippines and Australia and so on, but my feeling is that there's too much emphasis on the military in the budgeting process, and it's leaving, again, the local population out of the legislative and political process because we really are not benefiting from all this revenue that we're shipping to Washington, especially for that. So I think it's up to us to think outside the box and come up with solutions. One solution I know of is rather controversial, but I'll float it just because it's, I want to get the conversation going. There's a war tax resisters organization in the United States, and what they advocate individual pacifists and war resistors to do is to figure out the amount of your income tax that goes to the Pentagon and donate it to a charitable organization or a, preferably a peace or nonviolence organization, gun control, whatever, and that you can then write a letter to the IRS and say, "I'm withholding this amount of tax because I'm doing this with the money," which I think is more important.
Are there other ideas you want to put forward to voters?
Oh, absolutely, Ben. And let me just say now that I think Mark Levine has some good ideas, too. And people who aren't familiar with him should know that he has proposed a street vendor advisory board that would work in, under the mayor's jurisdiction to help promote and, you know, engender quality in the street vendors in our district, which I think is, you know, a really good idea. There's small business opportunities there, and quality, of course, is what's important. And I think if you could get, you know, an idea like that in place, it could really help the district. So, you know, there's some of his ideas that I would back. He has also an office of civil justice that he's proposed, which I think would be a good idea. And he also actually passed a, he had a proposal passed to have the police department send quarterly reports on the amount of desk appearances that they've required of detainees, which sort of would keep the city council more informed about what, you know, how the police department is handling detentions of people either in civil or quasi-criminal cases. So I think there are a lot of issues like this that can be looked at, and we could tweak the system. However, I think overall, the system has to be more than tweaked, and that is why I think the popular assemblies, the community assemblies, are going to be fundamental because the community boards are basically appointed by the city, and they're not elected. So the local voting population needs to have more say in their own self-governance, and they need to be more engaged. And so I would propose that we set up through the communities, either through, by blocks or zip codes or according to some system we decide on, to have assemblies that could actually weigh in on legislation that's before the city council. And the city council rep of the district would be the go-between to facilitate those meetings and carry the wishes of the voters to the governing body, the legislating body.
So we're quickly running low on time here. I think you've given the voters in District 7 and viewers of this program a good feel of some of your thoughts, some of your ideas, and some of your background. In the final 30 seconds, do you want to make a final pitch to voters, to viewers, in terms of when they go into the voting booth on November 7th, why they should choose you and not the incumbent council member?
Yeah, thanks a lot, Ben. What I would say to the voters is, "Vote for me on November 7th because I care about this district. I live here, I have lived here, and I love the people here. I'm concerned about our future because I've seen the trends in our society and in the city, and I think we need to be apprised of what's going to be coming at us in terms of climate, economics, and so on, and we need to get ready for that." And the way to do that is by engaging the voting population and strengthening the democratic process in our district.
Florindo Tronsaliti, Green Party candidate for city council, District 7. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ben.
The general election is Tuesday, November 7th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org, GothamGazette dot com, or m n n dot org. Thank you for watching Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Goodbye.
It's predominantly Hispanic, a lot of Afro-American, a lot of Asian, Chinese. I know there's a lot of people from the Middle East moving in as well, and it's been a multiracial, multicultural neighborhood.
District 8 happens to have the highest proportion of individuals in deep poverty who are having most trouble affording buses and subways. This district, it sort of is a microcosm of all the problems of inequity in the city of New York and the deep issues that we're going to have to confront to bring this under control.
East Harlem is known to always throw a black party for no reason. The diversity. It is so great to see so many different races together and partaking in activities and so forth.
Because we do have a lot of people that are still in the lower socioeconomic rung, and while there's a lot of justification going on with middle-class people having more money moving in, we still have, even in my complex, people who may be 10, 15 people living to an apartment because they're doing the things that immigrants did at the turn of the last century.
You have issues around deep poverty, around lack of educational opportunity, and one of the things we began picking up was, in addition to couldn't afford the rent, couldn't afford transportation. And we're actually, in large measure, not being able to get to a job, look for a new job. We also recognize that it really starts to confine you to one neighborhood. Public housing is in deep trouble. It has $17 billion in unmet capital needs, and that's why all these horror stories about elevators failing and mold, this is not accidental. It has to do with not providing the capital upkeep to maintain these units in habitable condition. So I think one of the things we're recognizing is that we have to take a much more comprehensive look at development here. And we've been arguing with the state and the city about the various incentives that are offered to developers.
The major issue today that I see in East Harlem is the lack of low-income housing, co-ops, condominiums being built up. So they have to put like a certain amount for senior citizens, low income, and the majority is market rates. The entire population in East Harlem can't fit into those criteria. We've seen a lot of diversity of people moving in, but it's young, middle class.
I would say the housing, put emphasis on that, because if you don't have a roof over your head, you can't do anything. That really has to be addressed. Places that were empty lots for years or stood there or boarded up, not even torn down, just boarded up with the wood and everything. Why don't you take all of these properties and put low-income housing? This has to be NYCHA. It could still be low-income housing.
I'm looking forward to a promise that they're going to fight for the area, you know, and fight for the city because what's happening here is happening all over the city. Why can't we live in decency instead of scrounging from paycheck to paycheck?
Stop building the shelters. Stop putting the money in there. That's just a Band-Aid. That's just a temporary fix. Start building the infrastructure for people so that it can go on from one generation to the next.
There's going to have to be someone who really understands what's going on at the grassroots level, who has visited the bodegas, who's gone into the public housing, who sees how people are getting health care. So I think it's going to have to be a combination of in-depth understanding and willingness to stand up and fight for their constituents in a way that perhaps other districts never have to.
Hello, I'm Dabi Carreras, and I was born in the Bronx, and I run a community garden. In 2008, I saw that our green spaces in our district were overpopulated, and I decided to restore them. Today, we have 20 to 30 adults and children enjoying the garden daily. I'm a financial advisor. I meet regularly with CEOs of private and publicly traded companies and nonprofits. These organizations help grow community-based jobs for our community. I want to help the people of District 8 have independence. I want to help us live a healthier lifestyle and become our own bosses. This is just one of the many reasons why I became an Assembly District Leader and why I want to be your next city council member. It's time for a real change. Year after year, our elected officials and their staff can be found neglecting us in the community. It's evident when you think about these politicians' mismanagement of our subways, the increased garbage, the increased homelessness and poverty, and the decades upon decades of neglected mold infestation in our homes. We must save NYCHA now. We must say no to displacement. In fact, I made it so our community can vote it out. Look for it on your ballot. No rezoning forever. Arbarios no se venden. Diana Ayala, Viverito, De Blasio are guaranteeing rezoning and major displacement. They have no solution to save NYCHA, to save HHC, to save child support welfare. Instead, they look to collocate yet another open-air sanitation garage. South Bronx and East Harlem are not a dumping ground for sanitation. This is how you can help save our culture and our community, from De Blasio, Viverito, and their newly-minted protege, Diana Ayala, and others who want to build luxury housing on Rikers Island. to build luxury housing on Rikers Island but yet put 90 shelters and multiple jails in the city. #VoteDabby. Look for me and the No Rezoning Forever Party on November 7th. Share this news with your friends. Register to vote and vote early with absentee voting as well as volunteer to our grassroots team because your vote counts.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, Gotham Gazette and the New York Amsterdam News, is pleased to bring you an interview with Dabby Carreras, the Republican Party candidate running to be elected in City Council District 8. I'm Eleanor Tatum, publisher and editor-in-chief of the New York Amsterdam News. New York City's general election is Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you and welcome. So why are you running for this office and what specifically makes you qualified for this office?
Well, I'm running for this office because we need real leadership and accountability. Specifically, what qualifies me, I'm a money manager. Now I'm dubbed the Wall Shoot Politician, which I own because we can have Wall Shoot work for us. Managing millions of dollars and following contract law is very important in a diverse hybrid community that we have. So besides that, the accountability that I will have is standing up to a situation that our mayor and the current city council member is forcing, pushing on the people in our community, and that's rezoning. I'm absolutely against rezoning. In fact, I started a party called No Rezoning Forever.
Have you been involved in the community board in your district?
Unfortunately, I have not. I've put application after application, never been accepted. But I am an Assembly District Leader and a Vice President in Manhattan.
So you consider rezoning one of the most pressing issues? Are there other issues as well in the district that are very pressing?
Yes. Housing is permanent housing. Affordability is extremely important. But other issues like, for instance, right now in our community, they're looking to co-locate sanitation garages. So I refuse to see East Harlem and really South Bronx become a dumping ground for the rest of the city.
Co-locate sanitation?
Sanitation garage, yeah.
With what?
Well, they're looking to build a new sanitation garage, but actually moving one from Park a little bit closer. So we would have essentially two sanitation garages in East Harlem, one that's servicing Upper East Side and the other one that's servicing Central Harlem, all in East Harlem. So the asthma, the dust, mold, a lot of these things are just compounding on the lives and the lifestyles that people live there. And I've been here for almost a decade now and I could see it. I could see how children are not as healthy as they should be because they're living with consistent mold and now putting more garbage in the area is not something that my community wants.
One of the issues in your district is also high unemployment rates. How would you work to meet the needs of your district with those, with trying to find well-paid jobs?
Local jobs. I mean, the other day, a street vendor asked me, hey, you know, it's really hard to get licenses and get other things. Well, it's because the entire measure of rezoning. You know, what everyone I seem to be who's in government is looking to really sell our lands and sell these areas away to real estate and real estate developers by building big, large, dense buildings. So the people who live in these luxury housing are not going to be looking for, you know, a regular, you know, cafe con leche. Instead, they're looking for a Starbucks or something like that. So the people who actually live in the district, you know, one out of two people, they make less than $30,000 a year in some cases. They can't possibly afford the different type of lifestyle that gentrification and this type of way abuse will bring.
Well, some people may say that bringing in a Starbucks may bring in more jobs. Bringing in the building that would go on with some of the gentrification that you were against would bring in building jobs. So how do you counter that?
I want local jobs, community jobs, not big box jobs. Community jobs, mom-and-pop shops, bodegas. These places, these things are falling apart. The culture in the community is falling apart by having these large, big sticker brand companies come in and really push the people who've lived there for years and years out. And with that, culture dies. You know, East Harlem, South Bronx, we're known for the arts. You know, that's the only thing that's really holding a lot of people here besides the awesome food and the music. I mean, if you take these authentic things of the community away, it's not the same.
So how do you plan to reinvigorate the area without doing, without building?
Well, it's by working with nonprofits. I mean, it's not about building. I mean, everyone thinks it's just, hey, I'm against big, tall, huge buildings. Yes, it's about the proper right, the proper way of building a society up. You don't just move the goalposts and manipulate the markets by changing values and changing pricing. You have to build the community up by having accountability and helping these people and the rest of the people who are new citizens and new people in this, in the community to walk up the economic ladder. You can never level the playing field. You know, all you can do is clear the playing field so we have an environment for everyone to grow. That's the issue.
In East Harlem, you've got issues of not a lot of proper supermarkets. You've got the issue of food deserts. Now, where's that supposed to come from without that people would consider putting a new supermarket in there, gentrification?
There's, there's food banks, there's, there's community gardens, there's so much places for people to get food. Again, the answer is not rezoning. You don't need to rezone to do more affordable housing, import more housing. You don't need to all this construction, which will add to the pollution to the area. You just need to have accountability with these nonprofits, with private companies, with even public companies. I mean, I speak with publicly traded companies every single day. These have solutions. These organizations force their solutions that bring accountability and that's what we're completely lacking. Right now, the policy is they're not looking to do affordable housing, they're just using, you know, mandatory inclusionary is really not inside of their, their contracts, which they change consistently. For instance, NYCHA. NYCHA has $17 billion in debt. You know, this is an issue that just got another $35 million cut, which 17, or $7 million out of that NYCHA dollar pot was, was administration. So there's monies to be found that you can help these communities and help the problem that has gone on for a long, long, long time. And that is just the neglect. I feel that they're purposely neglecting my community and the people here, all of us, just so they can do something like this and just blow it out and push people out. I mean, look, in East Harlem, 75% of the housing stock is being pulled away. It's unlivable. Why is that? How could we possibly get into a situation like that? It's because of consistent neglect by the leadership. The names are changed, but the policy is the exact same. And people from this district...
So who owns that housing stock?
Well, I'm talking about specifically in this situation, NYCHA. So NYCHA has been consistently selling off because they're in tremendous debt. So they have $17 billion in debt. I mean, this is a big systemic problem that's been going on for a long period of time.
So NYCHA is selling off what?
A lot of their land, a lot of their assets. Because they can't, see, ready? When you have bondholders and this goes into finance, they have to come forward, you know, you have to meet these debts.
So are you talking about the infield or are you talking about other properties that they, where people are living?
It's everywhere. I mean, one of the biggest things is we have an influx in homelessness. So there's a lot of areas where people could be living. And there's a lot of places where people want to have rent stabilization and actually have an ability to build a family and build a life. But instead, they're left to live in shelter and when the LINK system doesn't work, I mean, you go through LINK 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, Vouch, all these, they're not working.
The other thing that we have issues of, especially in your district, is with losing of 400 housing units every year to rent destabilization, there's a lot of tenant harassment. And what kind of protections would you put in place?
Well, in city council, you can make ordinances and that is very important. I mean, when it comes to rezoning, that's exactly what I see happening. Because you'll have one landlord who may not be a great landlord or who could be just a person who wants to leave and, and move to Florida or something like that. And he'll get with the other people in the area who may not be great landlords. And they will find a larger real estate developer who will say, I'll buy all your plots of lands if you warehouse one of these places so you can slowly harass the tenants and push them out. People who've been here for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years.
Okay, well, we know what the problem is. How are you going to address it?
Address it with monies and solution. I mean, I'm a wealth manager. I have a vast network of people. There are so many answers that the markets, that nonprofits, that public and private companies can do and help. This is the problem. See, the reason why the mayor and the city council members...
But you still haven't told me what, how you're going to address the tenant harassment issue.
Yes. Well, obviously, legislation to stop it. That is clear thing to stop harassment because it's, you know, if you're doing something that is literally pushing against a person to move them out, you need to have some kind of force of grit and teeth of, of an ordinance or almost of a law that would stop a person from harassing their tenants in, in that manner. But again, the reason why this is happening is because the mayor needs money. And the only way he can figure out to get money is by rezoning the most poorest neighborhoods in the city. And, you know, it's really simple. We used to get 50% of our budget coming from the federal government, 25% coming from the state government and 25% from the city. But our mayor refuses to work with the governor and refuses to work with the federal government to get these dollars. So things are falling apart. This is the reason why our train, like for instance, the train needs an $800 million rescue plan now. I don't see the mayor lifting a finger to even split that cost with the governor. These are problems. So it's all about funding dollars that the mayor needs. So his answer is push the people who are lower income out and import wealthier people in.
So before we end this interview, I just want to make sure we get to a few more things. Schools. How do you plan to improve access to early childhood education and after-school programs?
I'm so far, far for pro-charter schools that I'd much rather see our children in the neighborhood not have to go to school next to, you know, one of the 90 shelters that the mayor is looking to do or these community-based jails that the mayor is looking to do by closing Rikers Island and putting luxury housing on Rikers Island and moving jails and shelters to the city.
So you're also pro-keeping Rikers Island open?
I'm fixing Rikers Island. It's disgusting how, see, again, neglect, the city consistently neglects the people.
Okay, well, thank you so much. We have to wrap it up at that. The general election is on Tuesday, November 7th. For more information about voting, locating the poll site and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org, gothamgazette dot com, amsterdamnews dot com or m n n dot org. Thank you for watching Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Have a great day.
We have people that come from everywhere. You know, West Harlem is a kind of a melting pot and I think that makes West Harlem beautiful.
Harlem just is, it's a historic neighborhood, an arts and culture phenomenon, primarily African-American with a growing Latino and a growing white population. People want to be here and we welcome that as long as we make sure that those who have lived here aren't harassed out of their homes and apartments.
Make sure that the person in that seat does not culturally divide the community. That sees that all of these cultures are rich, that there's something that we can learn from each other and then also that we have some of the exact same needs.
There's a state of emergency in Harlem right now because of the extreme disparities in income and wealth. You have townhomes now listed at $5 million, which is great for the neighborhood, but we have to figure out a way how those economics trickle down into the people who are still disenfranchised. You have more people who are dual-income earners living in homeless shelters than you ever had than before.
If seniors don't have affordable housing opportunities, if working-class families don't have affordable housing and they've got to live two hours away to get to their job in Manhattan, it creates pressure across the border.
The stage is now being set for Harlem to be a primetime neighborhood. But what's happened is we were so concerned with building houses, we didn't build people.
When you create the place for the community to live, you can also create some of what the culture of that building is going to be like. Engage people, have them set up a tenant association.
I think what holds us back is we just really have got to get our arms around how we are educating our next generation. It's outdated systems. We need to look at our curriculum, what are we teaching our kids? Until we get that figured out and we get them employed, we're going to have this school, the prison pipeline, which is a big problem. We want a city council member who is going to sit down and talk with the community, go to all the schools, understand what different schools in the district need. One-size-fits-all cannot be the approach for any issue. And I think on education, we have to think about that more carefully. Education, skills, training, jobs, focusing on the jobs of the future.
As a direct result of our young people being trained and employed, we see young people not interested in violence as recreation or shooting as resolution for conflict.
That is not something that one city council member can do on their own. They need to be able to convince other members that something is a priority and then bring that to the mayor to get a city-wide level of support to this issue. So I'm concerned and interested in someone who can work well with others while maintaining their values and what they care about.
We need somebody in that city council seat that has vision, that has spirit.
I would like the new person coming in to be able to be a bridge builder for the people who live in Harlem, both new and old, and maximize opportunity for the benefit of all.
Hello, New York City and Harlem voters. My name is Pierre Gooding and I'm running for city council in District 9 Harlem, where I was born. When I was a child in the middle of the 80s, there was a crack epidemic. My mother did not want to send me to my zone school near the grandhouses. She had to leave her lifetime home to ensure that I had a decent education. When I came back to teach 6th and 8th grade ESL in Washington Heights, our schools lacked air conditioners. 30 years later, my zone school is still ranked 1984th on SchoolDigger. This is unacceptable and Harlem deserves better. Our team fought for 10 years and finally made sure that every school in New York City will have working AC. But this is just a small step in a much bigger battle. We must ensure that we provide the best education to the best children in the world. We will continue to demand that every school in Harlem give our young men and women a chance to succeed regardless of where they live. We believe that a 12% unemployment rate is also untenable. This is three times the city average and four times the national average. While Harlem is changing, longtime residents are being forced out due to high rent prices. We must make sure that our neighbors are rewarded for the sweat equity that they put into our community. We will introduce policy that rewards longtime residents with affordable housing and jobs in the community. It is time to put Harlem first. When a state senate candidate stated that he was going to send fried chicken and Kool-Aid and watermelon to Harlem and scam people out of thousands of dollars on Craigslist, I sent him to jail. Amazingly, his name was still on my ballot even as he sat in prison. We must elect people that will do the job. And we ask that you give us your vote on September 12th and November 7th. I'm Pierre Gooding and I'm running for city council in District 9. Thank you. Thank you.
Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, Gotham Gazette, and the New York Amsterdam News, is pleased to bring you an interview with Pierre Gooding, the Reform Party candidate running to be elected in city council District 9. I'm Eleanor Tatum, publisher and editor-in-chief of the New York Amsterdam News. New York City's general election is Tuesday, November 7th. Welcome, Pierre.
Eleanor, thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
What are your specific qualifications to represent District 9?
I think District 9 is in need of an individual who can represent the community in a myriad of ways. One, in terms of enforcing the laws that are currently on the books. I'm currently helping a building complex on 117th because there has been a situation where a tenant, a president, has been putting padlocks on doors. So, making sure that people's housing rights and other rights are, are met is something that my team is very serious about. Going beyond that, I believe you need an individual that is serious about tackling the, the issues in our community, specifically the 13% unemployment rate in our community that's been stagnant over decades, addressing the fact that currently there is a housing crisis in Harlem that we are well aware of. But how do you tackle it? Do you have policies that specifically address the issue? And, and moving on to education, Community Education Council, District 5, has just reached out to say we are at a crisis point in our community system. We only have four libraries and two librarians in the entire district. These are problems that have been persistent for decades, but the question is who is going to be the individual to build a coalition and solve these issues? So, that's why I believe that I am qualified for this job.
What are the qualifications that you actually hold in?
Absolutely. So, so one...
What's your track record?
Yeah. One, I'm the only teacher in this race, and I believe we need an educator to help solve some of our educational woes in Harlem. And so, 10 years ago, when I found a lack of air conditioners at IS 143, I began to advocate to ensure that that wasn't the case. And I worked with the administration over the years to ensure there were air conditioners in that particular school system, but moving forward to make sure that there were air conditioners all across the city. Now, in conjunction with New York City, and a new initiative has just come online where we will have air conditioners in every classroom, but that's not nearly enough. We need to do much more to ensure that all of our schools are doing well, to make sure that, that the school I was supposed to go to in Harlem is doing well, because right now it's ranked 1984th out of 2,300 schools on SchoolDigger, and that's not good enough. It's, it means that thousands of students in our schools have not been serviced. So, one, I believe we need an educator to, to be in this position. Two, I believe we need an individual who's capable of getting things done. Right now, there have been zero sponsored bills in Harlem or coming out of Harlem for elected leadership. I was responsible for putting my opponent's state senate candidate in jail because he was scamming people on Craigslist. This is the sort of advocacy I believe that we need. And so, when I see individuals coming down to run for city council because the salary's been jacked up, I do not believe that's right for Harlem. I believe what Harlem needs is an individual that is dedicated to solving these persistent woes that have been a part of our community for decades. And I believe any elected leader that's currently in office has to account for why this has persisted for so long.
Okay, I just want to clear something up there. It's not a candidate that's on the ballot. It was someone that was previously running, correct?
This, last November, John Gerodes was on your, your ballot as the state senate, the GOP state senate candidate from Rikers.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make sure that we, we didn't want to, wanted to make sure that the audience was clear that it was nobody that was currently on the...
No, it was John Gerodes, the Republican state senate candidate.
Now, as a representative for your district, what would your role be to discourage discrimination against marginalized communities such as immigrants, Muslims, LGBTQ individuals, and people of color?
This is something that is very, very important to our, our campaign. We, on January 11th, during a debate, we discussed what we will do to make sure that we bring attention to the needs of populations that have not been serviced currently, including the LGBTQ population, including our, our young folks who are currently being locked up in Harlem instead of getting the legal attention that they need. And so, this is where I believe you have to be an advocate. You have to have your finger on the pulse of what's going on. We know that we have a problem where for every 10 individuals incarcerated, nine are black. If we know this, then we have to use our laws to ensure that these numbers are changed instead of persisting for decades as they have. I believe that you need someone, again, who has their finger on the pulse and who's willing to take the steps to, to make these changes. And the problem that I see in Harlem is that these changes are not happening, and the community members are, are speaking up and saying, why not? And so, it's time for new leadership.
How would you go about helping to curb youth violence in the community?
Yeah, well, one, I think you, you have to be in the community, because I have individuals who, who come to me on a daily basis with particular situations, whether they're about violent situations or non-violent situations. So, one, I think you have to be there to address these issues. And then, moving forward on a macro level, we have to get the dollars into our community to tackle some of these issues. And again, when you have zero sponsored bills coming out of our elected leadership and out of the city council position, what it speaks to is the fact that these programs aren't coming online. When we know that our minority and juvenile population require services, we have to be a part of that change. We have to be proactive. Right now, it's not happening. So, one, I would be there in the community to ensure that we're addressing these issues in real time. But two, I would be advocating specifically for the dollars that we need in our community to ensure that these programs come online. For instance, the $1 million in public discretionary funds that should have gone to programs to, to service our populations never occurred, and this is the sort of injustice that I'm talking about, and we have to curb it. It has to end.
Now, when we talk about youth and youth violence, you know, we, we immediately think about the police. And what would you do to help improve police-community relations?
I am, for the most part, at this point, satisfied that, that our precincts are doing the job in Harlem. Harlem is a fairly safe community, and I want people to, to understand that. But there's more that can be done. When we had a community forum in November to discuss these issues, what we found is that the number-one issue coming out of the community was a relationship issue, just in terms on a daily basis, saying hi to individuals, knowing their names, having the sort of relationship where people feel comfortable sharing information. And so, I think that's where it starts. But one, again, you have to have the community forum so that you can know what the community needs are, and then pair that with where the NYPD is. But without that conversation occurring, you can't get to the next level. So, now, we have the data from that community forum that we are going to use to help improve NYPD community relations, but I believe that's the process that we have to be going through in Harlem, and that's what I believe is, is currently lacking.
So, is it community policing that's the answer?
Well, community policing is part of it. It's an environment. It's ensuring that our constituents have a place to turn to and that they feel that the NYPD is a partner in the process. But without communication, none of that happens, and that's where there is currently a breakdown. When I'm talking to our constituents, they're saying, well, here's the problem. How do we get it fixed? And the answer is supposed to be to call your city council person, so that, that city council person can advocate for those changes. And whether it's a macro-level problem like a 13% unemployment rate or a micro-level issue like taking out benches outside of A. Phillips Randolph Square Park, where now people who want to ride the bus, whether you're elderly or disabled or otherwise, have no place to sit, these are the challenges that you have to face, but you have to be in the community in order to know that they exist and currently. We need more.
One of the issues also in Harlem is housing and gentrification in Harlem. One of the things that is happening is that landlords are trying to be able to turn over their buildings, so there's an issue of tenant harassment. And how do you plan to protect tenants from being harassed?
Yes. One, we have to enforce the laws that are already on the books. Tenant, presidents, landlords are getting away with murder in terms of forcing individuals out, putting padlocks on doors, and then using those units for whatever he or she wants to do. This has to end. And this is what I'm talking about. In real time, we're dealing with this situation right now in Harlem on 117th. There is a building that's going through this, and so, again, you have to be there to advocate for your constituents. I do believe it's, it's in your interest to know the laws in depth so that you can advocate, because there are many laws that are situated currently in New York City to ensure that the things that are happening don't happen. And so, we have to be on the front end of advocacy. But again, whether it's enforcing the laws on the books or adjusting the API to ensure that a lot of these programs are ones that Harlemites can actually afford, coming down from $60,000 to $35,000, we have to be proactive to address this housing crisis. We are the number-one city in terms of homelessness in the country, and this is intricately related to housing needs. And so, we have to get on the front end. We know the, the problems, but we are not implementing effective policies to solve them.
All right. And so, in the same vein, affordable housing is shrinking. It's shrinking all over the city, Manhattan in particular. Harlem is one of the places where we see luxury housing going up all over the place. Is New York City's Affordable Housing Plan working? And what is the number-one thing you would do if you became the council member to continue to expand the number of affordable housing units in the district?
Our Affordable Housing Program in New York City and Harlem is not working currently, and the number-one thing I would do to address this is to ensure that the programs dedicated to ensuring affordable housing in New York City are ones that Harlemites can price into. So, adjusting that median income for most of these programs from $60,000 to $35,000 will allow our Harlemites to actually price into the program, and also taking a look at the credit rating system that currently is also pricing many of our Harlemites out. You have to understand how this process works to know where it is that people are getting into trouble or not able to access the system. And once you're able to do that, then you can, once you've diagnosed, then you can solve the problem. But I don't even believe there's been a proper diagnosis in terms of assessing the fact that many of our, our Harlemites cannot even use the programs that we hold up as the ones that push affordable housing in, in our city.
With NICA, New York City Housing Authority, how would you propose to improve the quality of life of the people living within public housing in this?
There are so many related problems, and again, I keep going back to what I hear in the community. I hear that NICA is a huge problem in the community. I hear that our shelters are a problem in the community. And so, number one, I promise that our shelters in Harlem are not going to be unsafe places. And this is what I'm hearing over and over, that people don't want to go to our shelters because they are unsafe.
But I was asking about public housing.
And going back to NICA, and going back to our public housing, we have to ensure that the individuals in the NICA program stay in that program, because a lot of new negotiations will be coming up in the next years over whether certain buildings are still a part of the program and whether tenants are still a part of the program. And so, for me, it's about advocacy. It's about ensuring that our individuals in Harlem who are currently in the program can continue to take advantage of it and continue to have it service them, because what I'm hearing is that a lot of people are, again, being forced out of their, you know, public housing.
That is all we have time for. Thank you for being on the program.
Thank you so much for having me.
The general election is on Tuesday, November 7th. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org, gothamgazette dot com, amsterdamnews dot com, or m n n dot org. Thank you for watching Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Have a great day.